...session in store with you right now. The Apple Rogers Institute and Goodway Group came together to put together some research and provide some insights around retail media. We and Goodway Group has also done us a special honor of bringing a Retail Media Network guest and Retail Media Award winner onstage with us right now. So please give it up for Angela Myers of Goodway Group and Charlie Charles of Dollar General Media Network.
Kellen, that was too much.
That's great. Well, thank you for such a warm welcome. I appreciate it. I'm Angela Myers and I lead the Retail Media Practice called Ecom at Goodway Group and I'm very excited to be here.
And I'm Charlie Charles. I lead our operations team at the DG Media Network and I'm thrilled to be here today. I have a smaller role to play, but there's such great exciting information that Angela's going to share in here with us.
All right, so let's jump in. Oh, we did our introduction, sorry. All right, we're all here because retail media is a really exciting space, but it's also really complex. And so if you read all the headlines, it looks a little bit scary and it looks a little bit like maybe people aren't on the same page. But this research that was done with P2P in Goodway would actually indicate otherwise. It would indicate that retail media is actually thriving. And so I'm not going to tell you about the numbers. Everybody knows there's a lot of money in retail media. It's growing like crazy. But let's talk about why it's thriving. Seventy-five percent of brands and agencies say that retail media helps strengthen the overall relationship that they have with the retailer. And on the flip side, seventy-five percent of retailers also say that retail media helps strengthen the relationship that they have with brands. So clearly it's a conduit. Forty-six percent of brands and retailers say it helps to increase collaboration and forty-five percent of brands say they've gained incremental merchandising opportunities as a result of retail media. So clearly it's working. It's working as a conduit. It's driving relationships. So before I go further, I want to give you a little bit of background into the research so everybody is grounded in what exactly was done, how it was done. I also want to say that the P2P has been great. They're going to make this available. So if y'all want to not worry about taking pictures of the screens, you're going to get a copy of it. I would also say that some of the slides are data-heavy that they'll see today and again, you'll get a copy of it. So if you can't see something, I'm going to give you headlines as we go through. Just know that you'll be able to see it. So the research itself was done in March and they looked, they talked to eighty-eight respondents across brands, across retailers, and across agencies. And it really covered a whole host of job functions and it covered a whole host of areas within retail media. The other important thing is that a similar study was done last year. And so there are some questions that we've been able to look at the results this year and last year and say, here's the trend. And the trends are actually really telling, really important. So we're pretty excited to be able to share that. All right, so let's dive in. There are really three areas that we've brought together based on this research today. And we're going to talk through them. One is investment. The second is confidence in the retail media ecosystem. And the third is all about KPIs and looking at this through the lens of an audit framework. So jumping into the investment, there are really four areas. First is the overall trends. So investment is continuing in retail media, but perhaps not as strong as the investment that we saw last year. And there are changes in budget dynamics in terms of where the budgets are coming from year over year. Performance continues to be the number one driver of where brands are going to invest and how they're going to invest, but there are other key drivers outside of investment. Data quality, cost effectiveness, and overall strategic alignment are really critical for sustaining investment over the course of time. Just to give you a little deeper dive into some of the data, sixty-one percent of respondents said, "We are increasing our investment either a little bit or a lot," but that is down seventeen percentage points from a year ago. So that growth is softening in how the investment is playing out in retail media. And according to brands, last year versus this year, those budgets are getting spread thinner. So we see significant increases in the number of networks that brands are investing in. Not a surprise because we see more networks popping up, but that number, you know, thirty-eight percent are increasing to four to six networks versus thirty-two percent last year. Forty-seven, I'm sorry, four to six networks is actually the forty-seven percent, up from thirty-four percent. At seven-plus networks, thirty-eight percent versus thirty-two percent. So clearly that investment is being spread out much harder. And more than four and five brands are actually investing in four-plus networks this year versus sixty-six percent last year. So that's a lot of change in investment. And I want to take a break and ask Charlie, what are your thoughts on diversification?
I have so many thoughts, but before we start, the timer isn't on at the front and so for me and Angela to kind of know where we're at could be great. But overall, as we transition back into the presentation, thoughts, I love the diversification. I think it's so important. When you think of brands and you think of their goals, you want to drive sales, you want to increase ACV, you want more points of distribution. That expandable consumption, you need to invest in all different areas and channels, whether that be trade, shopper, media, and store. And you need to see that happen. You need to set those items up for success. So as someone that works at Media Network, it's very exciting. I think it's great.
Awesome.
Oh, I forgot this part. The other part, the timer got me. The other part is with so many choices out there, you've got to earn that consideration with the customer. This is just a snapshot of our app. I encourage everyone in this room to pick up your phone and download our app if you haven't. This is DG Stories for us. This is just another way that we're engaging with our customer to just ensure that we can help them save money and time and find savings. And so as you think about the right for every retail media network, it's actually an earned right. Brands need to seek you out because you actually have demand and you have a scalable audience.
So where are some of those increased investments coming from? We know that ninety-four percent say they're continuing to invest in retail media. When we look at where it's coming from, forty-seven percent say that's a mix of new dollars and existing dollars. About forty-three percent say I'm shifting from existing budgets. And ten percent are saying it's coming from net new dollars. So there are a multitude of ways that the investment is actually coming to fruition. And when we unpack the existing budget sources, you can see that it's coming from a whole host of areas, whether that's a brand budget, a trade budget, media, shopper, e-commerce, et cetera. So what this tells us is that it is still a very nascent business. It's not established or these budgets would be a lot clearer than they are. So why are brands continuing to invest? Obviously, performance is really important, but also things like data insights and quality, scale and reach, reporting capabilities, alignment to branding, cost effectiveness, and actually uniqueness of audience through data, which I think is really important. When you look at this list, what do you think about the importance there?
I think so many things. But most importantly, I mean, people continue to invest because it's working, right? You have one key audience, you have the ability to measure, and you can see outcomes. In some channels, you still have a bunch of lucky metrics. So that's really important. But when you look further and you look at the unique audience aspect, when I think of the DG Media Network, I think of our ninety million-plus marketable profiles, that we have over twenty thousand physical store locations, and we have the real customer that we know is elusive and is hard to reach. And beyond just saying that, we did conduct research with the trade desk and were able to understand that over fifty percent of our audiences aren't even available in third-party audio demo segments in total. And so you need to have a reach. There needs to be demand. On the less important side that you shared, all of that comes after analytics, cost, et cetera. Without demand for an audience first and foremost, that is what starts it and then everything flows after.
Okay, so we started out with what's happening in the space. It's a conduit. It's driving great collaboration. Everybody's feeling good about it. The investments are there. We're pulling from different areas. It's not established, so work needs to be done. Now let's talk about confidence in the actual ecosystem itself. And this is where we see maybe a bit of a different story. And so when we look across all of the metrics that helped us understand this level of confidence, the first is the perceived effectiveness. So only half of those that were interviewed said that they're confident that retail media can increase brand awareness. Forty percent saying it can help drive sales and a third for improving long-term value. So not really great when you think about what we wanted to do, how effective we want it to be. And only thirty-four percent say that retail media networks provide quality data for effective targeting. This is a big gap. Maybe it's perception, maybe it's reality, but there's a tremendous amount of education needed to close that gap. And then market confidence, twenty percent of the market says they have low confidence in retail media, really highlighting the need for each of the networks to highlight their value proposition and their data capabilities. And on the good side, they're saying, hey, they're actually really great at driving traffic and some of the tactical things related to the retail media network, but there are some improvements needed. So it's really a mixed bag in terms of confidence. Digging a little deeper, when we look at overall performance, you can see some of the top factors here are the more operationally focused areas. Retail media, I feel good about it being able to drive traffic, good about the execution of tactics. It's constantly evolving, so there's that recognition that retail media is not quite established, it's still being built, it's still evolving, and so far, maybe easy to work with. But then you have this middle area where you see things like focus on being a partner or building ease of onboarding, responsiveness, lead times, and then incrementality and data sharing. So the confidence gets lower and lower across how they're rating performance with each of these areas. So I have to ask Charlie, when you look at this, what is your reaction?
I don't feel great as a retail media network. There's a lot of opportunity here. I mean, the data speaks for itself, though. I'd like to see more excellence. We do have opportunity, though.
Yeah. What can we do about it?
We are not going to solve it today, but I think there are two big things that we can do. When I look at this and I see traffic-driving capabilities and tactic execution, we're great at that. I agree. We are so good at that. We are so obsessed with the short term. We are thinking, what can I do with ten KPIs, a frequency goal, a budget of half a million in five weeks to demonstrate incremental sales? We have an opportunity to evolve. We need to start thinking about the long-term strategy. We need to start thinking about loyalty. We need to start thinking about retail media networks not being a singular tactic, but actually a full funnel solution, whether you're CTV, upper funnel, lower funnel, the PLA, we need to just think more holistically. So that's a big thing. The second part is we, as a retail media network, and I say this with love, as a former brand person sitting on the other side, we need to do a better job of listening. We have the same goals. We are trying to reach shoppers, transform behaviors, engage with brands, and sell more stuff. And the way we do that is having conversations about how we can address your problems and issues. And there are standards out there. There are things published, but we're not all there yet. This is still a new industry in total and there's a lot of frustrations, as the previous slide hit on. For the network at DG, our mission is media mill better. And maybe today you're going to get this presentation later and you're going to walk through and maybe flip through and find something, but we really encourage you to engage with us, the Goodway Group, with your other partners, even your competitors, to have some hard conversations about how we can improve the landscape for both our customers and our clients.
Thank you. All right, so recapping where we're at. We started, it's a great conduit, things are looking good in the relationship run. Investments are strong. We're still figuring out where they're all coming from. Confidence is not where we wanted to be. So now let's move our attention to the KPIs that we have today to measure success and talk about what an audit framework looks like. And we'll get to the why we need an audit framework over the course of the next few slides.
But this session's meaty, so people need to...
It is meaty. It's a meaty section. So let's step...
Are we dug in?
Yes. Let's dig in. All right. The first thing that we're going to talk about is how brands prioritize retail media networks. They're looking at performance metrics, reaching quality, cost efficiency, and data transparencies as the number one or number one, two, three, four things they're looking at in order to decide where, what that choice is, what that mix is. But what's interesting is we asked this question about how brands look at their retail media budgets and their overall marketing budgets. And man, there was a lot of mess in there, which we're going to get into the details about. They'll say it's the high cost that is the number one detractor for integrating the retail media strategy with the brand marketing strategy, followed by lack of budget. So it's focused on the financials. Complexity is the other area. So it's really hard when you have an established brand marketing strategy that you've been optimizing over the course of time based on brand needs and now you have this retail media strategy which has a lot of similarity but a lot of difference and it becomes really complex and that complexity shows through in the research as well. And then there are a lot of KPIs, a lot of expectations about what retail media is supposed to provide, what brands need to determine success or future investment, a lot. It goes so far beyond the cost efficiency, it goes so far beyond performance. And there are some gaps to close between what they're getting today and what they would like to have in the future. So if we dig in a little bit on the most important factors of deciding where to continue the investment, again, I called up those top four, but if we go a little bit deeper, we look at things like, well, I also need to understand technological advancements and integration capabilities across platforms and brand safety and compliance, innovation in ad format, customer support, and then writings on the something else, flexibility, true ROI, competitive targeting, measurement methodology, standardization, some of the things that Charlie just talked about. So there's a lot of desire to know more in order to, let's say, justify the investment and also justify the mix of retail media networks that a brand is investing in. Now when we unpack that question that we ask brands about bringing together their overall brand marketing strategy with their retail media marketing strategy, how those things integrate? We see those financial metrics pop to the top. Great. Feels a little bit like a red hair. When you go deeper and you see all of the other things that are being rated that they were asked about, and then you look at the writing, sixteen percent, highest write-in of any question we had in the survey, there's a lot of things that they are saying, get in the whip of them being able to look at things holistically. Human capital, talent, bandwidth, data transparency and availability, network performance, creative restrictions, long lead times, internal alignment. I would argue that is more of the reason, just based on being in the industry and having the conversations that we have. And yes, those financial constraints are important, but all of these other things are also driving the inability for these things to come together, which impacts your planning, it impacts your investment, and it ultimately impacts performance. When asked about what brands are receiving today versus what they want to receive, we see there's some alignment in profit and sales metrics. Seventy-six percent, seventy-three percent say they're getting that today. More say they would prefer to receive that, so there's a desire for more of that. Media metrics, seventy-four percent say they're getting, and only forty-one percent say they really prefer to have it. So there's a gap there. Same thing with engagement metrics. Forty-nine percent say I'm getting those, but only eighteen percent say that they want them. So there are some misalignments in between what brands are getting and what they ultimately want, and these are just some of the bigger buckets, the higher-level buckets. So there's clearly a lot of work to be done on the brand side, and this is what gets us to sort of this, how we wrap this up, how we think about using this research. So if we recap what we're hearing in terms of what the needs are, we look at things in sort of this balanced scorecard approach. And when you think about you as a brand or as a retailer, how you're also looking at the metrics you're either going to provide for the retailer or the metrics you want for the brand. I would encourage everybody to look at it this way because it's very easy to say all of these things like high cost and/or, you know, sales and profit are the most, most, most important things, but there are so many other important things. You need to look at things through the lens, not only of the financials, but of the customer and how the network is as an operator and how your brand, how you're operating today feeds into that. And similarly, what the innovation is. And I would assume that most have a balanced scorecard approach for their overall brand objectives, but maybe not their RMM objectives, and both of these things need to come together in order to align and have this become an established industry from what it is today. And so the last thing I'll walk you through is this notion of an audit framework. And I'll say, maybe it's simplistic to some of you, but I've been around a long time and there are some things that you just pull out of your pocket that you've used, like a RACI. How many people love a RACI?
I love a RACI.
Yeah? I'm dependable, but they work, right? So similarly, we're saying, hey, we've got some tools here that can help us because on average, brands say we need fifteen KPIs. Really, fifteen? For a four-week campaign, do we really, you know, so I think we need to ask ourselves, do we have the right KPIs?
Charlie went in a great perspective. He said, can you imagine if we had fifteen objectives on our personal evaluation for work?
Yes, for performance review.
Right, and that doesn't work either, so it's too many.
It's too many. So how do you call that down? Well, you put them through the audit framework and you really pressure test the crap out of them, to be honest. So the first question you ask is, is the purpose of that KPI clear and understood by all? That means the brand, retailer, the agency. If the answer is yes, great. If not, it needs to go. The second, does that KPI have the right criteria to indicate a level of impact? Something maybe numeric like an IROAS with a goal or perhaps something where you're looking for an increase in customer conversion and you just want to see the increase. Maybe there's not a number. Is everybody aligned on that, that the criteria that's being used is the right criteria? If yes, awesome. If not, it needs refined so that it can. The third is, does that KPI criteria score itself or direction, whatever it is, does it prompt an action? If it stops there, you got to refine it because it's not working. It has to prompt an action. And then does that action facilitate dialogue for change? This is a tough one. I'm sure people think, yeah, yeah, I've seen it a lot. No, not enough. And if it's not, then the KPI needs to be refined. And lastly, are the teams set up to respond to the changes that are needed to that KPI? If yes, awesome. It's a great KPI. If not, it needs to be refined. So it may seem a little simplistic, but we're asking a lot of the space and I think it would help everybody to sort of put that through the framework and say, what do we really need to know? Not only for one individual network, but to really invest properly across the multitude of networks we want to invest in. All right, so to wrap this up, we know that retail media is strong. It's providing great collaboration, great relationships, but we know that confidence is a little bit low, so we have to assess where things are and evolve how we're planning. The second is to know your balanced scorecard. If you don't have one, you should create one and make sure that they're aligned across the brand objectives as a whole as well as the RMM objectives. And then lastly, audit and adjust and do it with your partners. Okay. We've landed the plane with six minutes left.
Yes. We have. And to kind of kick us off, because I'm sure there's so many questions out there, I am actually going to ask Angela first question because it makes me happy, but I do want to know, what is the last thing you bought at Dollar General? So this slide is...
Okay, so first of all...
Get ready.
If you don't have the app, you do need to have it. I have a boy in a bubble because thirteen, he's allergic to freaking everything outside. And so we're constantly buying Zyrtec. The Zyrtec is the best at Dollar General because they're five dollars cheaper than the giant foods are for the auto people in the room. And they have a coupon for five dollars off plus an extra ten pound. I bought that twice. I saved nine dollars each time, eighteen bucks. Boom.
Very passionate and I... We appreciate you greatly.
So that was kind of our first question to kick things off. Does anyone in the audience have a question?
Ooh. We didn't have that awkward pause. We already have now.
Hi, I'm also wearing a red, so it's kind of, this is a sloppy, if you're wearing some lumps. My name's Vida and I just have a quick question. I have a million heck yeses to this, very quickly, we're in love with the things you're saying. When we, when I've heard in the industry, when they should burn in years, when I hear people talk about brands, knowing you come from the marketing world, and I hear people talk about trade or shopper, there's, it's gotten more complicated. And I think that like with Ecom, with brands being referred to, is it in-house brands? Is it brands that are worth some trade dollars as a, you know, how do you say it? And a model check, I guess if you will, but then there's actually a trade company or the trade and shopper marketing teams that are buying media, technically. Not all, not in all cases. Like how do you guys help to sort of standardize just some of the language we use? Because I think that is the biggest issue that I've seen is we use language and we think we know what we're talking about with each other. And people are expertise or experts in their domain, so this is not anything I have to do with anybody here. But it's the clarification of what that is. A brand is simple and a marketer might be a, you know, works under the CEO and then their shopper works under the CCO. And I feel like sometimes it gets conflated. I don't know if you guys feel that and if that was not any intention to...
Yeah.
To like poke holes in what they're saying. We're learning from me on how you guys approach those types of conversations, if you agree that that's an issue.
I think, I think what you're saying is validating exactly what the research is saying. And it does have to be solved, but even your perspective, what you just said, that does not exist at every brand. So there is a lack of standardization in terms of how brands operate, how they budget, and their title to that, right? But it does make it really confusing to know. And maybe, like I come from old retail and I know that some of that is by design. So that you can determine like how you get through a negotiation or JVP in a cross shop, right? So I think there one has to be a desire to fix it, but I also think it's like a two-pole issue. Like what you're talking about is a problem that's been around, but then also retail media has exacerbated it.
Yes.
Because it's just, yeah, it's just, there's so much to choose from. So I don't know the answer, but I know that like bubbling it to the surface and saying, it is a problem, let's define that problem a little bit more. Who benefits? Who loses out? And how do we fix it to create something that's far more of a win-win? And I think it's going to take retailers and brands working together to create some level of transparency in expectation.
That to me is the biggest part of transparency. Both sides need to say, we don't have it figured out and have conversations and kind of start at the most simple components of what you're trying to do and make sure that everyone is following along. This industry and this space is moving so fast that, you know, all of us probably could get along in a conversation and say absolutely nothing, but sound like we said everything.
Yeah.
But that happens as you talk about the people doing the work, campaigns all the way up. It gets further and further. I think that happens everywhere, but since the ground under our feet right now is moving so much, it is much more about just taking mindful moments, taking a step back and just rooting everyone at the beginning, like what problem are we solving? I mean, we ask that to ourselves half the time because we're moving so fast on this to make sure everyone truly understands.
Yeah, I could not agree more. Going to stalk you after this to talk.
No, no, no. I'm just saying, if you want to stalk us, that's how you do it.
I think the...
Hi, so one question. How have you seen e-commerce leaders at the retailer or merchants marketing really get into you on your retail media strategy? How has this evolved in the last three years, three, four years?
We have fifty-one seconds. So for Dollar General, we are doing some very exciting things. We have partnerships with DoorDash. We've got a lot of things running for Ecom, but what's really interesting about us, though, is with our twenty thousand-plus stores, convenience is key. So so many things still happen in-store for us. So we're actually doing a lot of exploration and making sure that we can fulfill that trip for them, but we know that their go-to is just their local DG. So we're right in the middle of all of that, having great conversations, figuring out how to earn their engagement, how to keep the app extremely shockable and make sure that they can see what's in stock, they know what they want, they can discover and get inspired. So that's very much what we're doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, folks.
Is this way correct? Hour over. It's red dot. Oh my gosh.
Catch Angela and Charlie in the halls near this room if you have more that you want to ask them. I want to thank them so much for a great presentation.